Call meeting number five to order. This is, uh, March 7th, 2016 at 5:30 PM in the, uh, Thomas J. Smith. I almost had it on paper. Thomas J. Smith, Council of James. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? It's not a party until something gets broke. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We've got a nice crowd tonight. Okay. I'm gonna ask, uh, we do have a big crowd tonight, so I'm gonna ask that, uh, you keep your talking down to a whisper, please, if you don't mind. Thank you so much, so we'll get through this meeting nice and smooth. Oh, and also, if you do have, yeah, if you do have cell phones, would you please turn them off or turn them on vibrate, please? Thank you, Mohammed. All right. Kathleen, roll call.
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
McCambeau?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
All right. Uh, first for the, uh, on the agenda is the Mayor's, those are Mayor's Awards. I got one date wrong for Mr. Mitchell. We wanna do that closer to, uh, the event, so we're gonna hold up on him. But I do have, uh, one of my Mayor's Awards winners here tonight, and, uh, it was a hard call to make, especially when you're dealing with this young man, because he's got a twin brother that's just as active as he is. Uh, and, uh, they do, they do so much, and, uh, uh, I'm really proud of both of them. Um, but I'm going to, uh, I'm going to honor Marcus tonight, uh, especially after I saw a really cool picture of him in the newspaper, um, and I did call the Hawkeye. I told them from this day forward, no more pictures of him in the Hawkeye, 'cause he looks a lot better than me. That being said, be it known that on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I'd like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your positive attitude, your ability and commitment to young people, and your example of being an outstanding young role model to the youth of this community helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On March 7th, 2016, this Mayor's Award is presented to Marcus Temens. Would you please come forward? If you don't mind, we'll get a picture taken with ya from our professional photographer. And she's free, that's what makes it so much more fun. Thank you, sir. And would you mind having a word, please? Right o- right there, right behind you. Yes, sir. Right in front of the microphone. Yes, sir.
All right. Well, I'd like to say thank you, first and foremost. I do appreciate it. Um, I guess Howard Thurman once said, he says, "Don't ask, uh, what makes you," or, excuse me. Howard Thurman once said, what did he say? I got my nerves buzzing, 'cause I never had something like this, so this is the first one. But Howard Thurman once said, he says, "Don't ask what the world needs, but rather think on what makes you come alive," and do that, because the world needs people who come alive. So, this is what makes me come alive, that I'm very, I love people. I really do. I love people, and I wanna see people grow and be the, to the level that, uh, that I believe that God is even calling them to be. And I, I just have a desire to see the people in Burlington in general grow. So, I'll keep it short. In other words, you ain't seen nothing yet. So, uh, yeah.
Again, I'll tell you what, if I was, uh, if I was half the young man at his age that he is now, I'd probably be somebody right now, but, uh, anyways, we certainly, what's that? Mohammed, he's, he's trying to score points on that property. But anyways, we thank you for coming down, and we'll give you an opportunity now, if you'd like to, if you'd like to get on out of here before we get to the ugly stuff, we'll, we'll let you get on out of here. Thank you so much again for coming down. Okay, next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Item 1, Consent Agenda, having been discussed or considered to be routine by the City Council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Tonight, on the Consent Agenda, we have uh, the usual finances and miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We also have five resolutions. The first is a resolution approving refund of liquor license for Sweden Shop Incorporated, doing business as The Crazy Coyote. Uh, the second is a resolution approving the renewal of Taxi Cab Vehicle for Hire License for Robin Canova, uh, doing business as A to Z Taxi Cab LLC. Uh, the third is a resolution establishing a no parking zone on the north side of Louisa Street, extending from Madison Avenue to the east approximately 50 feet. The fourth is a resolution changing the name of a portion of Messiah Drive to Lavender Lane. Uh, the fifth resolution, uh, is approving agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for a state recreational trails project, completing a portion of the Flint River Trail. Uh, we also have public hearing set for March 21st. Uh, the first is consideration of plans and specs for the 2016 Seal Coat Streets Reconstruction Project. The second is a consideration of an amendment to Ordinance Number 3351, Westbrook Meadows Plan Unit Development, by adding Outlet A to the provisions of the PUD. The third is a consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property located west of Garden Avenue, Lawn Avenue, and Dill Street, from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Single Family Transitional Residential Zoning District, with a planned unit development, uh, southern cross PUD overlay zone. And the fourth is a consideration of a general obligation loan agreement in principal amount not to exceed $1,350,000. Uh, and we also have two appointments, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Honor. We have a low-rent Housing Agency appointment for Edward Prill, and the Riverfront Advisory Committee for Elizabeth Van Fliks Sally. Thank you for serving.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone from the audience that would like to have any of these items from the consent removed? I see none. Counsel?
Not for me.
Nope. Okay, can I get a-
Your Honor, a motion to approve all listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda.
Second.
Moved in second, Kathleen.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, nice habit. Uh, this is the time set for hearing for consideration of a sale of property locally known as 115 Golf Lane, with conditions. City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa. Publication has been made in the Hawkeye, as prescribed by law. Um, for those of you that may be bidding for the first time, um, what we will do is we will open up the bidding, and, uh, as we go through, if, if you would like to make a bid on that property to the, a higher bid, just raise your hand, and, uh, we'll make sure that we recognize you and get your information. Um, if you're not on the list, and on this property, on 115 Golf Lane, we only have, uh, one bid in, and that is from, uh, D L L Ar- Arbaba.
He's DJ.
That's what I was gonna say. All right, from DJ, so, uh, we have one, one offer from him, and so if there's anybody else that is going to put in an offer, I will need your, uh, the name of your company, or your business, um, and your address as well, so.
It doesn't have to be a business, it could be a personal thing.
Uh, Mr. Teslin, do you have anything you need to-
Yeah, I'm gonna just run through a little bit on the property. This is property the city acquired, uh, through the 657A abandoned building process. It is, uh, a property, uh, located on Golf Lane, 115 Golf Lane. Some of the specifics on the home, uh, was built in 1961, 1,800 square feet home with a crawl space, 16,000 square feet lot, two bedrooms with large closets, two full baths, three-season rooms, screen and porch, and two-car attached garage. Uh, it is, uh, a home that doesn't need a lot of work, like most of our homes that we acquire through this process, but it is a, a home that does need some minor upgrades, uh, electrical service, HVAC, possibly, uh, some minor plumbing repairs and wiring as needed, and a lot of just general repairs as needed or as necessary by the purchaser. Any defective items, uh, shall be repaired as needed. Uh, all permits shall be received for any work that is done on the home, primarily plumbing, electrical. The property will be transferred by quitclaim deed. The entire amount, uh, of the purchase shall be paid within 60 days of the sale of the property, um, to the city, and at that time, the quitclaim deed would be transferred. As the mayor mentioned, we currently, currently have a high bid in the amount of $10,000. Based on the condition of the home and the neighborhood, staff would recommend that a, a purchase price of $60,000 to $65,000 be the minimum accepted by council. That's up to council whether they wanna accept that. Um, but if we didn't reach that amount, staff would recommend we re-advertise and, uh, try and get more interest in it, just based on the condition of the home and the neighborhood, uh, and the assessed value previously of the home, so. With that, if there's any questions, I can try and answer them.
Okay.
Uh, we did receive one other purchaser, just from Mercer's as well, so they are, did submit their information.
Okay, before we move into the, to, to start the bidding, uh, is there anybody here that, uh, has any comments that, that is for or against us selling this property? Is there anybody here for or against us selling this property? Okay. Okay, then. I'm also going to remind you too, that if you are bidding for the first time, to make sure that when you put your bid in, to come to the mic, so that, uh, the people on TV can get you, hear your name and your address as well. So, um, let's let the, let's let the bidding begin. Uh, we have, we have one bid, top bid, right now at $10,000, uh, and that is from DJ. I have a bid at $10,000. Do I, do I hear a 15? Do I hear a 20? You guys are waiting to go ahead? I have, can I have you come to the, on your first bid, yes, please come to the, uh, front and let us get your name in.
Uh, Brian Hopkins, 704 Boardwalk Drive, West Burlington, Iowa. It'd be under a company, Community Development Group.
What was the name of that company?
Community Development Group.
And what was the bid?
Um, $20,000.
Hey, Brian. Did I tell you lately that I like you?
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we have a $20,000 bid. Do I, do I see a higher bid, 25, 30? Have a higher bid, 25 or 30? This property is, yes, sir, can I have you come to the? Uh, this property is going to make somebody a fantastic home, and I know I say that every time, but I'm telling ya, this is gonna be a fantastic home, it's in a great location. I, I just, I, I think people should be jumping on this. Yes, sir?
Uh, yeah, the Mercer family, $25,000.
We have $25,000 from the Mercer. Do I have $30,000? Yes, sir.
Brian Woolridge with West Burlington BW LLC. Address is 14491 Skunk River Road, Burlington, Iowa. $45,000.
Brian, you know I like you, you know that, right? We go way back, you don't remember me, do ya? Yeah, I changed some tires for you a long time ago, back when I had hair and bigger muscles, yeah. Okay, we've got $45,000 bid, uh, for Brian. Uh, do I, do I see a 50? Do I hear a 50? We really should've put a minimum on this, uh, this, this house is, uh, it's gonna make a phenomenal home.
Be Matthew Rinker, uh, 912 Hegeman Avenue. Uh, it'll be under JLS, KLS, uh, properties, and put in a bid of $65,000.
Mr. Rinker, he's my kinda guy, man. He's my kinda guy. I've got a bid at 65. Do I, do I, do I have a, uh, another bid at 70? Do I, do I see a bid of 70?
DJ Arbaba, 1903 Arrow Road, Iowa City, but I work here in Burlington. Um, 70.
I have 70,000. Do I have 75? I've got 75, 70,000. Do I see 75? I have 75. Yes, sir, please come forward.
Matt Higdon, 105 Greenwood Drive in Burlington, uh, under Higdon Development LLC.
105 what?
Greenwood Drive.
What was your bid?
75,000, please.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Matt. Do I, do I have a bid of, uh, we're at 75. Do I see, do I hear 80? Do I have a bid at 80? Mr. Rinker, I have Mr. Rinker at 80. You can stay right where you're at, we know where you're at now, so I've got, I've got Matt Rinker at 80. Yes, sir.
Do I need to say anything, or you got it?
No, I got you now. I got you now. I've got Mr. Rinker at 80. Do I have an 85? Do I have an 85? I've got Matt Rinker at 80. Do I have an 85? DJ, or 85? I've got DJ at 85. Do I have a 90? We've got DJ at 85. Do I have a 90? I've got 90 for Mr. Rinker. I have 90. Do I have 95? We've got 90. Do I have 95? I've got 90. Do I have 95? Don't let this property, don't, don't let this property pass you by, it's gonna be a winner. I've got 90. Do I have 95? Going once, I've got 90. Can I get a 95? 95, and that is for Brian. I've got a 95 with Brian. Do I have 100? I've got 95. Do I have 100? I've got 95. Do I have 100? You're gonna make your money back on this property. Do I have 95? I got 95. Do I have 100? If I can get 100, I promise I'll come visit you once a month. No, let me cancel that out. That's gonna make the bids go down. I've got 95. Do I have 100? Going once. 95. Do I have 100? I'll wait on ya, ma'am. Are we going 100? Okay, 95 going 100. This is the last call. Anybody else? Man, you guys came to party tonight. Mr. Rinker's at 96. I've got 96 for Mr. Rinker. Do I, do I have 1,000? Do I have 100,000? 97? 97? DJ, don't let him, don't let him send you out like that. The camera's on, the camera's on ya. They're watching ya, Mohammed. Do I have a, Brian? We got Brian at 97? I've got Brian at 97. I've got Brian at 97. Going once? I've got Brian at 97. Going twice? Sold to Brian at 97. What a fantastic auction tonight. I appreciate everybody tonight. Awesome. Awesome.
One note, could we have Brian fill out one of these forms to just weigh your current information?
Your resolution to close.
Second.
Kathleen.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a motion, a resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 115 Golf Lane, with conditions, City of Burlington, Iowa, Des Moines County, Iowa.
Second.
You have a motion to amend?
Could have any discussion.
Discussion? Okay.
Your Honor, I have a motion to amend Exhibit C of Resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 115 Golf Lane, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa, that the property be sold to Brian Hopkins.
Community Development Group.
Of Community Development Group? All right. Uh, in the amount of, uh, $97,000.
Second, Captain.
Moved in second. Kathleen.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
And then on the resolution as amended?
As amended.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, aye, Sam. If you'd like to leave from this property, thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, we had the interest. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We sure appreciate ya. Oh, man, I'll tell ya, I'm just exhausted. Ready to go home after that one. All right, good deal. Okay, we'll, hey, can I get, thank you, thank you, Ryan. Okay, we're gonna move right along. Uh, next, we have, uh, another property for sale. This is a consideration of sale of property locally known as 300 Washington Street, with condition, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa. Mr. Teslin, do you have any, uh?
Yeah, a little different property here. This is a former, uh, or a vacant commercial building in downtown, uh, Central Business District at the corner of Washington and, uh, Third Street, formerly known as, uh, Typewriter Building. It's a four-story commercial building, built in 1883. It's owned C3, Central Business District, downtown mixed use. Uh, commercial and residential mixed use are, are allowed in the property. It's a 5,300 square feet per floor, located across from the city parking lot. Uh, located in the downtown Commercial Historic District on the National Register Historic Places, and eligible for the 10-year tax payment program, uh, through the downtown. Uh, one of the conditions of the property is that a $25,000 deposit, uh, be paid to the City of Burlington for roofwork, uh, that is required, uh, to be repaired. With, uh, work to be completed by November 1st of 2016, with an extension of up to 60 days if substantial, uh, progress is made. Uh, failure to complete, uh, that work within that timeframe would, uh, result in forfeiture of the deposit money to the City of Burlington, and would allow resale of the property. And again, with any work that's done, all permits shall be received and code shall be met as applicable for work on the structure, and, uh, purchaser shall maintain property and hold insurance until, uh, sale by the City of Burlington.
Well, before we go any further, is there anybody that has any, uh, any issues with us selling this property? Is there anybody in the audience?
Steve Frevert, uh, Executive Director of Downtown Partners. I don't have an issue, but I just wanna state, uh, as we've stipulated before, Downtown Partners will be bidding, uh, on this property. Regardless of who ends up with it, uh, we want to, uh, make sure that this building is brought back into, uh, full and proper use. I'd be happy to work with whoever ends up owning it, uh, in terms of grant funding, tax grants, that kinda thing.
Awesome. Awesome. Good deal.
And one other note I didn't mention, per the previous, uh, resolution by the city, uh, the former property owner has until May 1st to clear out any personal property on the first floor, so.
All right, then. Let's, uh, let's start the bidding, shall we? We have one bid in, and, uh, same rules apply, uh, if your name is not, uh, is not on this paper, which we only have one bid, that's Downtown Partners, Inc., uh, then I'm gonna have you come to the, uh, to the front and give us your name, uh, and your address as well, so we can get you written down here, so. Yes, we, we already have you, Steve, so.
What did Downtown bid on that?
Uh, we have a $2, we have a $2 bid, uh, from Downtown Partners. So, we have a $2 bid, um, we're opening up the bid. Do I, do I hear, uh, sorry, a $100 bid? $50 bid? $2.25? We believe in the, we believe in you people. No? No other bids? Going once? No other bids going twice? Okay. Then we've just sold the typewriter shop to Downtown Partners, Inc., 610 North Fourth Street, Burlington, Iowa, for the sell price of $2.
Motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Your Honor, a resolution approving the sale of property, property locally known as 300 Washington Street, with conditions, uh, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just, I, I'm, yeah, I've been, uh, opposed to us being involved in this all along. This, this building's gonna be redeveloped, hopefully. I, I, I hope I'm wrong in my doubts. I was wrong on the, on the Hotel Burlington. I was the only one that voted against the, uh, the, uh, efforts to redevelop it, and I was wrong. This building is in much, much worse shape than what the Burlington Hotel is. I, I hope whoever's gonna do it, uh, a lot of success. Um, I know that there, it can't not be done without grant money. Um, and, uh, the grant money's gonna come from taxpayers, and, and it may not be all local, but it's, it's the trend that's taking place that, uh, anytime the, uh, the development of this nature takes place, it's, uh, it's taxpayers' money, so, um, that's, uh, it's becoming a bit more discouraging all the time. It's, um, I, I'm, I've been inside this building a couple of times, and it just, uh, my heart raced the whole time that I was in there. When you can go up on the eighth floor and, and see four, four floors below, uh, right at your feet, it's, it's scary. But apparently, there's enough people that believe that, uh, it can be, uh, redeveloped, and, uh, there's a timeframe attached. I, uh, I, I hope that, uh, they can meet it, so.
Well, I have confidence in them, so, uh, they've, uh, DPI has never let us down before. I don't see it happening this time, so, um. Counsel, do you guys have anything else to add to this? Okay.
I need a motion to amend Exhibit C.
Sorry about that. Your Honor, a, a motion to amend Exhibit C of the resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 300 Washington, uh, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa, that the property be sold to Downtown Partners, Inc., uh, Burlington, Iowa, in the amount of $2.
Second.
Moved in second.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
And then the resolution as amended? Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. Nice habit. Good deal. Uh, this is time set for hearing for consideration of plans and specs for the 2016 HMA resurfacing project. Publication's been made in the Hawkeye, as prescribed by law. Steve? I mean, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Ryan?
Mayor and Counsel, uh, this is our annual overlay project for various streets throughout the City of Burlington. Uh, includes the milling of the old asphalt surface, uh, milling and removal, uh, patching of the subsurface beneath and new overlays. Uh, included also is the overlay of an existing PCC street, uh, concrete street, uh, with asphalt. Uh, one street, the intent's just to do patching, uh, in the five-year street plan, we had an overlay planned for the street, but, uh, its condition isn't degraded to that point where we believe that, uh, funding should go towards that overlay. Um, streets to be addressed are Haskell from West Avenue, north to where the Seal Coat begins. Um, Ironwood, uh, sorry, Haskell's the street that's, uh, currently concrete getting the HMA overlay. Uh, Ironwood from West Avenue to Williams, uh, this is the concrete street that is being patched. Uh, Plain from West Avenue, uh, to the concrete just north of Etna, not Amelia, uh, as was in the counsel item. Um, Amelia from Plain to Liebrich, uh, subject to fund availability. That was a street that was in out years of the five-year street plan that got brought forward from the appearance, uh, from the apparent, um, costs that we saw. Uh, Court from Centr- or Court from Central to Eighth, and from Fifth to Fourth. Uh, Tenth Street from Court to High, this is also a concrete street that's just getting patched. And then Parkway from 14th to Madison, subject to, uh, funding availability. Um, our estimated budget for construction is $472,938, or $983, sorry. Early on, uh, in the design, it looked like we were gonna be able to add both Parkway and Amelia. Uh, with the current cost estimate- Uh, with the current cost estimate, we're at just under five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, it would be our intent to let the project as planned, and we would do a change order to bring the project back within budget. Uh, within the past year, we've had one, uh, larger contractor around dissolve, decreasing competition, uh, that contractor also owned, uh, some ready-mix plants around, so those got bought up with the, by the other ready-mix operator. Um, oil prices have kind of gone through the floor, um, so our cost estimate is best guess. Um, it's always a little bit of best guess, but our guidance this time's a little bit sketchy, to say the least. Uh, so our intent would be to bring the project within budget by change order, um, if we do come near this cost estimate. Uh, that would be by either removing Amelia or Parkway. Both are relatively close on cost to each other, um, or potentially just that patching on Ironwood, uh, talking with the operations manager, that is something that, uh, his street crews are capable and able to do this summer. Um, so depending on what value we need to cut the project back by, we'll make that decision in-house. Questions?
Counsel, any questions? Thank you, Ryan. Anybody from the audience have any questions or comments?
Leon Shahean, eighteen twenty-one Mount Pleasant Street. I'm wondering about Mount Pleasant Street west of Roosevelt Avenue. When is that scheduled to be worked on?
Uh, Mount Pleasant Street west of Roosevelt is scheduled to be done in fiscal year seventeen. Uh, that project's being funded through, uh, the Surface Transportation Program, uh, DOT monies. That money becomes available in October. Uh, typically, that means that we do the design following the monetary availability, and then it would be a construction, um, in calendar year seventeen.
So about a year from now?
Yes.
Yeah. Anything else, Mr. Shahean? Anyone else have comments or questions? Counsel, are you ready? Okay.
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close. Public hearing, we have a second.
Second.
Okay. Kathleen?
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambo.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the two thousand sixteen HMA resurfacing project.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion, council? Okay, Kathleen?
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambo.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Ryan. Okay, we have, uh, next, a consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with the Art Guild of Burlington Incorporated for encroachment in the city right-of-way at three oh one Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa, and Eric?
This, uh, the Art Guild's, uh, doing some renovation projects now, and, uh, this, uh, is required for a secondary fire escape, uh, for the mezzanine, uh, in the alley, alleyway. Uh, it is, uh, a landing and some stairs, uh, does maintain, uh, nearly eleven-foot, uh, width between adjacent, uh, protrusions within the alley, uh, which, uh, had been reviewed by staff and meets our requirements, uh, so this will allow them to have that secondary access for their property there at, um, three oh one Jefferson Street.
Okay. Questions, council? Anyone from the audience have questions or comments concerning the encroachment with the Art Guild? Seeing none, we entertain a motion.
Motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
I have a resolution approving permanent encroachment agreement with Art Guild of Burlington, Inc., for encroachment into the city right-of-way at three oh one Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Kathleen.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Wilson. Aye.
All right, good deal. I would've commented, the director's here, and she tells me they're really expanding what they're doing down there. I think that's really tremendous, so, uh, I wish you well, folks.
Awesome. Good job, director. All right, uh, next, we have a consideration of fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget.
Stephanie is sitting over there, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just getting it up on the PowerPoint.
You saw that, that, during the headlights look, wherever she. Go ahead, Steph.
Okay, so I'll just go through my presentation. If anybody has any questions at any time, go ahead and, um, let me know. Um, basically, for this budget fiscal year seventeen, this is a comparison of the revenues by our different funds. Um, you can see in the current fiscal year, we had about forty-nine million budgeted, and this year, we're looking at fifty-six million. Uh, the largest increase is in that capital projects fund, which includes, um, five-point eight million for the flood mitigation project. So, other than that, everything is else just real stable, not, not, not too much difference.
So, I heard a question this morning about fifty-six million dollars in the city budget, but it, the operating itself budget is a lot less than that, correct?
When you say like the general fund?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we can, that's more around the seventeen, eighteen million dollar mark.
Yeah, thank you.
So, this is, uh, just another breakdown of our revenues for the budget year seventeen. Um, this is a report out of our OpenGov, and it shows that of our revenues, thirty-six percent of that is coming from property taxes and also, um, like, local option sales tax. Twenty-two percent's charges for services. Um, intergovernmental revenues are about twenty percent. Those include, um, grants, road use tax, um, backfill, things we get from the state of Iowa. Miscellaneous revenue, that's where we have our bond proceeds, um, are categorized as miscellaneous revenue, and that's nineteen percent, and then you'll just see the other small percents there. And then here's our expenditures for the fiscal year compared to sixteen and seventeen. Um, we have fifty-six million budgeted for seventeen. Um, again, the biggest difference is in that capital projects where we have that large flood mitigation project, so. And again, this is the budgeted expenditures out of OpenGov. Um, thirty-four percent of our expenditures are personnel services. This includes salaries, um, benefits, um, insurance. Contract services are, make up twenty-seven percent of our expenditures. Capital outlay, eighteen percent, and debt service, thirteen percent. So, this budget is proposing, uh, the tax, the property tax rate to stay the same, no increase, and then this just shows you the history of where we are now and where we've been in the past. And then this sheet is just showing, um, if you have an assessed taxable value on a residential property of a hundred thousand, how much tax you're gonna pay for the fiscal year. Actually, in fiscal year seventeen, it's gonna go down slightly because of the rollback, um, decreasing.
But Stephanie, that rollback formula, it, it can go either up or down based on whatever the state sets.
Yes, it's set, set by the state.
Okay.
Yeah, state growth is capped at three percent annually, so anytime that their growth is more than three percent on a statewide basis, and it throws in, and I don't understand how the egg formula works into that, but anytime it's over that three percent, you're gonna see the rollback change to allow for growth to, to either catch up or be limited, so.
So, here's just showing it on a commercial property, um, the rollback is, that does not change, and it's now set at ninety percent, so they won't see an increase or decrease in their taxes because there's no change in the tax rate or the rollback this year. What they could see, though, is a change in their assessed value, which that's all done by Des Moines County. Here's just a comparison of where we fall with our property, um, tax levy, and just showing our taxable valuation compared to other communities, um, over the population of twenty thousand. We're slightly over the average. You have anything to add, Jim, or?
Um, just, if you notice, I know that, uh, Bob, you mentioned earlier about where our value, valuation is, per capita valuation. Uh, if you notice where the communities are that have those per capita valuations in the twenty thousands, uh, you're gonna see that those are the ones with, uh, higher average property taxes, and it's just, there isn't, we just don't have as much property value on a per capita basis to fund ongoing services, and you think about police and fire needs or the, out of the general fund, that's about two-thirds of what the general fund is, those, those expenditures are gonna be the same whether you're in, uh, Burlington or if you're in Coralville. You know, there's not gonna be a tremendous amount of difference, and, so that's, that's one of the things that causes the hardest, uh, the biggest issue for us in trying to keep our, uh, property taxes and level of services both at, at something that is considered typical. You can't have both, I guess. You can't have low taxes and the quality of services.
But if we can grow the, we can grow our community with more investment and so forth, it'd be positive now. That will address this issue.
Yes.
I'm not making it a promise.
And you may have someone who comes up later that would mention that if you didn't offer as many property tax abatements, uh, that you might have higher per capita valuation too.
Nobody's here that's going to say that.
I don't know about all of it.
Oh, I forgot Leon is.
And again, well, the budget book will have a separate slide that just shows, uh, the communities of population twenty to twen-, thirty thousand, uh, the, there's eight core cities that, that all are essentially in non-metro areas. Uh, we fit very much right in the center of property tax-wise with that group.
Yeah.
And we, and that reflects, we all face the same issues.
So we'll just go through some of the items that are impacting the budget. Our taxable valuation growth came in at a one-point-one percent increase this year. Um, the, the TIF taxable valuation was up seven point, or sorry, four-point-seven-six percent, but our regular taxable valuation was just up point seven-three. So what this means is in property taxes, we're gonna just see an increase of ninety-five thousand compared to the fiscal year we're currently in. Um, health insurance, we'll just kind of go over some of the items that are in the, in the budget. Health insurance is, our premiums came out with a seven-point-nine percent increase. We have them in this budget at five percent. Um, my next slide will show you how our five percent cap works, so we'll get to that item. Um, you can see IPR's rate stayed the same from last year, um, and fire and police pension actually went, it's gonna slightly go down for fiscal year seventeen. So, I know Councilman Scott had asked about how our health insurance cap works. I know this is kind of a busy spreadsheet and hard to see up there, um, but basically, um, this is generated from our union contracts that started back in two thousand and nine. So we have language that our plan, our total plan C, which is our health insurance is at like a five-hundred-dollar deductible, um, that, that health insurance rate plus our dental plus our reserve that we put in for partial self-fund cannot increase greater than five percent. And that number was started, like I said, back in FY, um, two thousand and nine. So what we've done is we've taken the numbers from that year, added the five percent, that's in that last box at the bottom, and each year, then, it, it can increase by that five percent. And if the increase, or if our health insurance doesn't go over that amount, then we're, we are, how we say it is, we're, we're staying within that five percent cap. So even though you, you saw in the last slide, our health insurance is gonna overall increase seven-point-nine percent, that last column, FY seventeen, it, the, the amounts for single, which is six hundred and nineteen dollars a month, and family is one thousand six thirteen a month, they do not fall over our caps. The family is right at the cap, but it doesn't go over, so that means we don't have to make any adjustments to our health insurance at this point, 'cause we're staying within that five percent cap.
But if we keep having seven percent increases from now on?
That won't work.
Yeah.
Right.
Although, we still have to see what happens with, uh, contracts as we move forward.
Yeah, but I, my, my point is, we're at, we're the break, quote, break-even right now, and if we keep.
Yeah, right.
Progressing at seven, ten, fifteen percent, whatever it happens to be.
Right, we'd have to make adjustments. Does anybody have any questions, or?
Thank you for including this, by the way. I think this is good.
I think we're gonna have some adjustments down the road. Anybody say?
Yeah, while we're, while we're on that, we, uh, I, I think you might've used the wrong terminology, maybe not. Um, when you were explaining that at the work session, you said that the, the reserves would pick up the difference. Is it truly reserves, or is it the, uh, the difference between the allowable growth? I don't know how to word that. We, we, we allow for a five percent increase annually. Some years, it's gone up three percent, so that, so we, we kind of build in a cushion, correct?
There's kind of a, a bank, and they, they, we've used terminology of bank, and in the past, I, you'll see one year in here where we actually were over. We weren't meeting, we, we had talked about that banking correctly, uh, 'cause if, if you're underneath, say, your five percent increase in the cap, premiums only go up three percent, you talk about banking two percent. Uh, the following year, you might bank one percent because your premiums only go up four percent. Uh, then you'll have a year where it might go up eight percent. Well, when you, when you add and subtract from a bank, it doesn't net, match actual percentage changes in, from when you're doing a five percent, and we got caught in people talk, thinking about the adding and subtracting from that bank instead of looking at how these caps, that the bottom two lines down there show you how the caps increase. Uh, the, the language in the contract was about if you have a capped value for the single cost, um, in, in the given year, the following year would be five percent higher than that, and that cap moved forward five percent higher each year regardless of where the actual premiums came in.
Exactly.
Um, and the hard part for all of us is how do you communicate that? 'Cause this is not an easy concept, and we've, I'm sure we've used wrong language as we've talked about it over time.
And I think that's why this is so good, and I'm sorry. Just go ahead.
Oh, I, I, this is, uh, this makes it a little easier for me to be able to explain, and the terminology used at the work session really made my head spin, and I had to, uh, I had to have this to look at to, to, uh, straighten it out. It's, it's, and I'm still not a hundred percent certain that, if I can wrap my, still wrap my arms around it, so.
I don't know that we found the way to communicate it correctly yet. Um, we understand how the five percent, how it works, but how do you communicate it? We've, we've had trouble, how do we write down as we do negotiations with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
And it's probably why we're one of the few places that's done this.
But it's still valuable, I think, still valuable.
Well, it's, I mean, there's, you can look at this in a couple of different ways. So the nice, what this is allowed has really been a partnership between employees and, and the city. The city has, the city's given up, the way the contract is written, has given up control of making plan design changes. Uh, they've given that to the employees to ta-, at each year to take a look at, do we wanna see plan design changes occur? And that, the context of having that occur is when you have, if the rates are more than five percent higher, if they go over that cap, then the, the employees have a choice here, do you wanna pick up a portion of premiums, or do you wanna ma- make plan design changes to reduce the cost? Um, the employees have always chosen to make plan design changes. Um, so they, but that process of trying to figure out how to manage costs, we've given the, the, the employees a huge role in that. At the same time, we've gotten the limitation, we know what our increase is gonna be, but we can't re-, we give up the ability to try to do, make alternative, look at alternatives that would reduce it more than that, or to offset it by pushing more costs to the employees. And should you push more costs to employees? Well, you look at the private sector, the imply, the private sector's seen a huge shift. Um, even the public sector has seen a, a significant shift, but the way our language is written in the contract is different than what anyone else is. There's- There's, you can look at, there are benefits to it and there are detractions from it. And, you know, how does it weigh out? The, the nice part from a budgeting perspective is you know, you have a defined cost in here that you know where it's going to be. But everybody gains something from this. The employees gain some control. We gain some consistency to cost, but we also lack the ability to, to do other things, to look at changes too, so.
Well, for right now, this is working for us.
It, it's worked over the course of this contract, and as we move forward through, I mean, we're in the middle of negotiations. I don't know where we end up with as we move, move forward with where this, this same concept stays in place. We'll have to just wait and see.
This, this has worked for us as management, and it's worked for them as union. It hasn't worked for the citizens.
It's, and the hardest part is communicating.
Well, communicating it and the, and the fact that, that business after business after business is expecting more and more and more from their employees on, on picking up and sharing the cost.
Right on.
And making them understand what that cost, what that cost is. And the, the only thing that we've done as a community is increase the liability to the taxpayer. We've, we've increased the, we've increased the, the deductibles that we purchase, but the, and, and the employee has remained, the, the employees' deductibles have remained relatively the same. They do pay a little bit, uh, they do pay a little bit more in, in, uh, cost sharing on prescription drugs, and the, and, um, and, uh, a little bit more in, in doctor's visits than what it was in two thousand and nine. But the, the out-of-pocket expense hasn't changed much, but the liability to the plan has, not the liability to the plan, but the liability to the taxpayer has increased because we're self-funding, uh, more of the plan than what we have in the past. By purchasing a lower, or a higher, uh, by purchasing a higher deductible plan, but leaving the employees' deductibles the same. Do you understand that?
Okay.
My only issue is, it comes back to the same thing I said before, is, um, i- is this sustainable? And I don't, I don't think it is. How much, how much again, uh, are we paying out in, in, uh, just from the fire depart, just from fire and, and, uh, police?
I don't know. Two point eight, I think, somewhere in that neighborhood is total health insurance cost for cities, for the city as a whole. Is that about right? Just shy of three million?
Yeah, I think that's...
Um, I'm not sure in public safety how much it is, because that's like, I'd have to add about ten different numbers to get that.
I just, again, my, I just think we need to be mindful and, and keep that in the, in our, not rearview mirror, but, uh, moving forward, that are we going to be able to, are we going to be able to sustain what we're, what we're doing? And, you know, what type of changes, or how drastic of a change would we have to, would we have to make? And I'd much rather incrementally start working, working toward that, that direction instead of just letting...
We've talked about what, what your strategy is for what you want to see happen for negotiations in closed session, and it's probably the spot where you need to keep strategy to, but the concern that you're expressing about, that's, it is a big, a big cost item for the city if you're looking at three, three million dollars. We have a, that's a large piece to see increasing annually. And especially when you look on a property tax basis, what Stephanie has presented in, in here, our general fund-supported property taxes increased .74%. And if you have a, a major cost component in there increasing 5% annually, it's, it's tough to keep up overall.
Exactly.
We've been able to make it this, this, this year, and I can present a budget that over a five-year basis is meeting our targets, but it doesn't take much of a hit next year to have that go south. And, and people need to be cognizant of that. I mean, I'm not concerned just about this piece. Health insurance is one of them, depending on what happens with negotiations and how, how, how your, the new structure looks. There are other components that can very quickly put us into a precarious position for next year.
At that point, we'd have some tough choices to make again.
Well, yeah, if, you take a look at, if we have any cost component that, that hits $50,000 annually outside of what we're at, you're effectively talking about one position somewhere.
Yep.
It's kind of a, that fifty to seventy thousand, depending on where you're at in the, in the system.
Right.
So, um, we'll move on to the general fund. So this is showing our general fund revenues for the fiscal year seventeen. They're approximately 12 million. They, they're increasing slightly from FY sixteen. The one item that does increase the most is miscellaneous, and that's a budgeted figure we've gotten from VenueWorks on, um, revenues, their revenues increasing, so that's what's causing that to increase slightly. And then this, just, just showing how it's broken down by property taxes, hotel motel tax, charges for services. And then here are our general fund expenses. So I know you had mentioned the operating fund. I mean, this is where fire and police are, building code, our general government, public works, admin is here, engineering, transit. These are all the different, um, expense categories that are in that budget. And the overall general fund expenditures are 18.4 million. So I included a slide, um, in, in this one that I didn't last week, trying to explain what Jim had said. Our revenues are only 12 million, but our expenses are 18 million. Where's the rest of the money coming? And they're actually coming from transfers. So to the general fund, we transfer in for budget FY seventeen, 7.1 million. That's coming from, um, local option sales tax, other transfers from admin for like sewer, solid waste, road use. And then we do transfer some out of the general fund to 1.4 million. Those are mostly just to cover the deficits in the other funds. So as you can see, for FY seventeen budget, we're, um, budgeting an increase of just 70,000. Did you have anything?
Yeah, well, transfers out, uh, sales tax is a major portion of that, about, about 800,000, and then, then yes, there's, is transfers to reduced debts and other funds. Um, you also have transfers into the general fund, uh, some of the property taxes that we collect to support, uh, employee benefits, those levies, and then insurance costs are collected in a separate fund and then come in here. So transfers are one of the major problems with trying to keep track and make sense of how, uh, government funds work, but they're also a requirement for how general, or how governments are required to report their funds.
A lot of this information is on our website, right?
Yes, it is. In fact, you can, it, you can go through, you have a couple of years worth of budget books. Uh, you have all of the information, and specifically in regard, that's the open government stuff is under the finance department as well. You also have the audits, the, the comprehensive annual financial reports out there, so people can go back and look and see. And there's a wealth of information that's beyond what most people want to look at, but there's quite a bit of information.
It's there for those who want to look at it. I, I have to ask this question. Can we go back one slide?
To the expenditures?
Yeah. Auditorium, 545, 670 last year, 674.50 this year. A hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar increase. What's happened?
Well, I mean, when, again, on that, this previous slide, you saw how the, the revenues, they, they're budgeting more revenues and they're budgeting more expense, basically. But the, the net is what...
It's about the same.
Is about the same than, for VenueWorks.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. We'll move on to the sewer fund. This budget includes a 3% increase in our sewer user fees as of July 1st. Um, this is due to the increase in the operating cost and then making sure we're in compliance with our debt, debt service requirements for the sewer separation projects that we've, we've entered into. Solid waste fund, where, um, this budget includes a 25 cent increase, which is a 1.9% increase for the fees as of July 1st, so, um, and it'll go from 13.50 up to 13.75 per month. Um, we have an increase in the landfill tipping fees of a dollar per ton, and also 10 cents increase for the waste management fee. And all those are included in that 13.75. Here's just a recap of the project, the capital projects that we have budgeted in, in fiscal year seventeen's budget. I think a lot of these were presented through the budget process. Does anybody have any questions on any of those, or?
And a lot of these are covered with, um, grants or...
And then you have a breakdown on the finance page two of how...
It's actually an OpenGov. If you, if you go to the OpenGov site, um, there's a, the, our five-year CIP plan is out there, and you can see it broke down by project and then how it's being funded, and a description of the project.
See, I think that's important for people to look at, because they're looking at, say, Mount Pleasant Street, a million seven, and you're thinking, wow, where are we going to come up with that? But it, it shows you where, where the money's coming from.
Exactly.
And the flood protection, et cetera.
And that, that will also be in our budget document once that's put out there. So, sure.
Leon Chahan, I, I'm still a bit confused about the Mount Pleasant Street, uh, hot mix asphalt project. Is that going to be done in your fiscal year ending 2017, or is that going to be after July 1st, 2017, that that actually gets done?
We put it into this year's, the seventeen budget so that it can occur prior to the end of June 30th, 2017. Uh, that project may or may not, depending on when it gets on the bid calendar with DOT, when it's actually let, it may cross over from one year to the next.
So realistically, it could be in FY 18 then?
Uh, it'll probab-, my guess would be that you'll see costs hit both years.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's an example of, it's budgeted at 1.7 million. A million of that's coming from a federal grant. 160,000 is coming from the city of West Burlington. And then we have that we're going to bond for approximately 480,000 for that project. So... So just a recap of the hotel motel tax fund. We have budgeted 800,000 in revenues there. Of that monies, it's split 70% to the city and 30% to the convention and visitors bureau, up to 700,000. And then after 700,000, it's split 60, 40. The city gets 60%. Here's just a list of the expenditures. We have budgeted 771,000. Of that, CVB's going to get 250, and then it just lists some of the other items that will be paid out of hotel motel. Majority of the expenses come out of our special projects, activities. So, does anybody have any questions on any of those items? Sales tax fund, um, we have 4.2 million dollars budgeted. It's an increase of 206,000 from the previous year. We have budgeted 4.1 million in expenditures. Over half of that is going to go back to the general fund for property tax relief, the operating equipment for police officers and their vehicles and equipment that will also be transferred back to the general fund. So I should say about 3.5 million is really going back to the general fund. And then the other projects will, um, fund out of sales tax are listed there also. Any questions on any of these? So the next slide is just showing the elimination of our existing account deficits. At the end of fiscal year 15, which ended June 30th, 2015, we were at 1.5 million. So this is showing what we're going to, um, transfer for fiscal year 16. Seventeen, we're going to transfer 340,000. And by FY 20, we should have those deficit balances taken care of. Any questions there?
Good work.
And then included a slide just showing our legal debt margin. Our goal is to keep it under 70%. At the end of fiscal year 15, we were at that 66.92. We're projected 16 to be at 68.58%. And then this budget, we're projecting it to be at 67.79. And that's it.
Do you guys have, uh, anybody from the audience that has any questions? First up? What's that?
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Larry Williams, 1567 Mason Lane. I know there's several of you troubled with the cost of insurance and that. Just from my personal perspective, I spent 15 years with the county as a correctional officer. I gave up 20% of my wages to go to work for the county. The reason for that was I wanted a secure job. I didn't want to depend on the business world to keep me employed. And the benefits, I wanted retirement, and I wanted good health insurance. And those things aren't always there in private employment. So during my course of years there, many of the police officers that we have now, they're excellent officers, would cry a little bit about, I'm sick of this job. I hate this type of work. But then they would look at the benefits and say, I guess I better stick it out. So if you think about mixing the benefits, there's going to be a lot of good people that aren't going to stick it out. They're going to go for something else. So keep that in mind when you're dealing with these budget problems. It's very important that, that these benefits are there to keep the good employees. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just say, I, I, I agree with you to a degree. Uh, I still think, uh, we need to be mindful of that because it all, it all costs the taxpayers' money.
Larry is absolutely 100% right. And if you don't believe him, go out and talk to the folks at Dresser-Rand and down at J.I. Case and at General Electric, find out how much trouble they're having hiring people because of the change and the benefits that they've had to make to keep their businesses running. They don't have this pocket of money that they can reach into and, and keep pulling out of. They've got to do it by what they produce, and, and the money that they make has to pay for those things. On the government side, you just keep opening your wallet and pulling the money out, the government agencies do. And that's how they, how, that's how they make you comfortable in those positions. That's how they pay for it. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I, I don't want to take away anything from anybody. I don't, I, I, I think that the folks that work for the city deserve everything that they're getting. But I also have a great appreciation for the people in the private sector that keep funding all of these folks and keep giving up more and more and more and more. There's got to be, there's got to be a balance somewhere. I'm not, I'm not looking to take anything away. I'm just looking at trying to come up with a, but I'm going to save what I got to say about the budget at the, at the end of this, but it's, uh, hopefully I'll be able to, uh, bring everything together that I, my thoughts on it.
Any other comments from the audience?
Leon Chahan, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I, I guess I'd like to start, first of all, I think some folks out there think, well, I don't have any idea about money. Uh, I've got a four-year college degree in accounting. I graduated summa cum laude with a 4.0 grade average. I know what I'm talking about. I guess the first thing when it comes to these budgets is what I call the golden rule of budgeting. He who has the gold makes the rules. He who approves, or she approves, the budget has the gold. It's up to you people, not anybody else, to decide what the city's going to spend. And I guess the, the thing that bothers me, and I've gone through all your budget stuff, I read the comprehensive annual financial report, I look at the budgets. I do more than any other citizen in this community looking at your finances online. And I have some big, big issues. One of the things that came up on the screens, that your per capita, uh, property values were low. Well, the first thing that showed on your screens there is 10% of your property values are in TIF. Now, I have a favorite, favorite term for that. I call it tax excrement financing, and I'm not misspeaking. Basically, what's happening here, while your per capita valuations keep decreasing, decreasing, is you're not taxing new construction. With these abatements, with TIF, uh... With these abatements, with TIF, assessment reductions, rebates, you're lowering the taxable values per capita. It's not some mystery thing happening. It's the economic development. The other thing that didn't show here is just how much money you're really spending. I went through and just made a list, somewhat updated here, on what I call a tax excrement financing, 2.75 million dollars. Abatements in a previous meeting, 2.6 million dollars. Rebates, one that I know of involving Randy's new manufacturing plan on Mount Pleasant Street. That's $100,000. Years ago, and it's still with us, there was an assessment or abatement reduction for the casino and entertainment complex that Randy Weingard has. That's $400,000 plus annually. The tax abatements that you're offering on what is known by the rest of us as eminent domain mall will be $1 million annually. So, Jen, I don't know what the number is. My recollection is when you made a tax incentive for them, the total was $4 million, but I don't know how that was broken up. In addition, the Chamber of Commerce gets 3/4 of a million dollars from you. Folks, that's a lot of money. And you talk about what your property tax revenues are with TIF and the regular taxation. You claim your revenues are 13.5 million dollars, plus or minus. It's actually much more than that because you have to add, when you want to look at your gross revenues, you have to add what you're rebating. And that's not done. And I take issue with that. I don't care what the regulators say. I don't care what the state of Iowa says. If you decide not to take revenue that you're due, that's the same as an expense, and that is nowhere in your budgets. And that's why there's this mystery every year, well, we're running out of money. We're running out of money. It's because you're giving money away. It never shows in your records. And there's nothing more irritating to residents. I've lived here for over 30 years. There's nothing more irritating to us than somebody come in new and have the money to build a $400,000 home and not pay taxes, and I'm footing the bill for their police, fire, snow removal, the whole works. That's really irritating. Now, that's bad enough. But with all the money that you spend on economic development, it's not working. I went through, took some digging. It was kind of hard to get these numbers, real numbers to work with. But the labor force in 2000, actually the end of 1999, was about 22,350 people. At December 2015, that number had dropped to 20,880. Now, there's a blip in there that's going to show up perhaps in '16, I don't know, for the fertilizer plant, but then we're going to be headed the same way once again. So what that's saying is that people are being forced to leave this community because there are no good paying jobs. And I'll get right to the point on that. And I'll name names here. This money that you spend on economic development is being used to reward employers that cut wages. First one, many years ago, Flint Cliffs, they cut wages. Case has a two-tier wage system. Dresser-Rand cut wages. Champion Spark Plug has a two-tier wage system. GE cut wages. In addition to that, some of the other businesses in the business park are actually outsourcing centers for some of the others, GE, Case, where they hire permanent temporary workers for basically a poverty wage. And my definition of a poverty wage is less than $15 an hour cash wage, not the way the Chamber of Commerce calculates it. So what's happening here is you're spending, in the neighborhood of $7 million a year, subsidizing employers that are driving down wages in this community, and you wonder why your assessed valuations are declining. It's not rocket science. And Mr. Davidson, you're a school teacher. One of the things you learn with kids is if you don't want bad behavior, you don't reward it. Am I not right? You're rewarding bad behavior here. Now, there's some other accounting issues, and I've never got a resolution that I've felt comfortable with. You've got three bridges that are in various stages of decay. Cascade Bridge, gone. Mount Pleasant Street viaduct, pretty sketchy. And the Central Avenue overpass, there's things going on with that that bother me. Has there been any contingency? Has the value of those bridges been written off?
When you say written off, you mean as assets?
You carry those bridges as assets on your balance sheet. Do you have a value on the balance sheet that, for those bridges?
I'll have to look with the life. I would, I would think that there's no value left, depending on the life value, but I'll have to look at the detail.
And I guess, in that vein, when you acquired what I refer to as eminent domain mall, your total acquisition costs were about $10 million. You're selling that for about $2 million. Am I not correct? Where was that money written off? Where and when was that money written off? I've never, going through your comprehensive annual financial reports, I would have expected to seen in some year, a heck of a decrease in your net, net worth. I didn't, I didn't see it.
We did have a land impairment adjustment. I'll just tell you, I'm not sure exactly what year that was, but we did have it.
Wasn't, didn't that process start several, several years ago?
Yeah, I think it's close to when I started, so I can get back to you on that.
Well, I'd like to see that because I, looking, just trying to look through the numbers without access to your general ledger, I don't have a clue. And I guess, in a related question, on Randy Weingard's facility on Mount Pleasant Street, there was a $100,000 rebate check written to him for his property tax. A simple question is, what's the debit in that transaction? You credit cash, you debit what?
I'm sorry, how much, are you talking about just the regular rebate?
I'm talking the rebate for the facility on Mount Pleasant Street at what used to be Fairway Mall.
Yeah, basically, it's recorded as an expense. So we've recognized the revenue coming in. We turn around and expense it out with a...
What account would that be?
I think we use a local contribution account.
Is that under, in TIF? But it's a cat, it's a, it's a TIF, but you set up a special TIF?
A separate fund, yeah. I thought he was asking about the expense account.
That portion, you revenue, you receipt the revenue and then expense it right back out. It doesn't go into an asset account.
Well, that, that was my question.
Right, okay.
I guess, you know, you have to look at the big picture. One of the things that I see happen in government is every year, you keep doing the same thing. You budget for inflation or whatever changes you have in cost, but nobody takes a look, steps back and takes a look. I've complained about economic development, and Tim, you'll back me up on this, for decades.
Yes, you have.
One, it's just not fair. Two, it's unconstitutional. And three, it's not productive. But moving on, the other big thing that's tearing up governments across the country is the war on drugs. I'm old enough to remember when the Controlled Substance Act of 1970 was passed. And the big reason that happened was because of opiate deaths, heroin. We're right back where we were. We've got, and I've got my handy dandy fact book here. In this country, this is a couple of years ago, 2.3 million people in prison. Half of those are in prison for minor drug offenses. You take any number that applies to prisoners, that's a staggering cost to the taxpayers. Unbelievable. My calculator won't even handle that number at all. But that's not the only cost. The cost of getting there, getting those people in prison, is expensive. If half the people in prison are there for drug offenses, half of what you're spending on law enforcement, give or take 10%, I'm not going to argue down to the, the 1/10th of a percent, half of what you spend on law enforcement is involved with the war on drugs. Already, other states have said, we give up on some of it. We're still putting people in the county jail here for marijuana offenses that are legal in other states. We need to get ahead. We needn't be the laggards. And I want to address the opiate issue. And I've got a question for you, Bob. Do you know what the difference is between Vicodin, Percocet, Methamorphine, morphine sulfate, and diacetylamorphine is?
Yes, but I can't tell you. It's confidential.
You're sure?
Yes.
They're all pain pills. Why don't you say what's the difference or what's the same thing? And the only reason I'm letting you roll on this is because this is kind of toward the end of the painting conversation, so I'm going to let you...
Yes, it is the end of the conversation. Anybody have any idea what those drugs are?
Go ahead.
What the difference is?
You tell us.
Nothing. Vicodin is hydrocodone, or has hydrocodone in it.
I would suggest, along these lines, that you're talking to the wrong people. You ought to be talking to the state legislature if this is...
But you, there, now, let me follow up one thing at one time here. Anyway, Vicodin is hydrocodone. Percocet has oxycodone. Methamorphine, you know it as codeine. Morphine sulfate is what's commonly in this country referred to as just morphine. Diacetylamorphine is a legal drug, be the equivalent of probably Schedule 1.5 in this country, if there was such a thing. It's for end-of-life pain issues in England.
What's your point?
I'll get to the point, Bob.
I hope so, if it's getting late.
Well, you're going to have to wait for supper. You're spending my money. We're going to talk.
Okay, come on.
Anyway, I'll get to the point. Diacetylamorphine, no doubt, the active ingredient is morphine. It's heroin. We've got drugs that are perfectly legal. There is no difference.
I see what you're saying.
Methamorphine is codeine. It's legal. Morphine sulfate is restricted use drug. It's legal. Diacetylamorphine, same stuff, illegal. We don't have consistency here. And a lot of these opiate deaths are not in kids, but old folks. You know, I've had to take a family member to the hospital, not because of anything that the family member did wrong, but what the doctors did wrong. We had a terrifying experience. And you can go online and look for drug interactions. They aren't there, but I'll tell you, a family member got plenty sick. I had a scare, and it'd come out, you know, I have pain issues with my back. Some people with the issues I have are crippled. I have a lot of paralysis in my left leg. You know, a lot of prescription drugs are dangerous. I just don't know, and I don't support using law enforcement for prescription drugs or what would otherwise be bootleg prescription drugs. You're spending over a million dollars a year. Again, you say you're running out of money. In the budgeting process, there is no state law that says you have to dedicate $1 or 1 million. That's what I said when I started this conversation. You are the people that have the gold because you approve the budget. You can decide how much money you want to spend on the war of drugs. There is nothing that the state says how much you have to spend. You're spending over a million dollars now. Has it worked? And I see you shaking your head. I see the traffic stopped out in front of my place at night. I see what's going on. It's costing you a lot of money, and it's not working. Do something different.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. We appreciate you, Mr. Shahean. Where are we? I lost my...
The council's got an ordinance.
No, we're still here.
Okay, any more comments on the budget? Okay.
Your honor, move to close the public hearing.
Wait, 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 wait a minute.
Well, you still have a chance to comment it. Anyway, don't you?
Well, no, it...
I'll leave it to, I'll give it to the council first.
Yeah, okay, fine.
Yeah, yeah, if you close, if you close the meeting, then we really shouldn't be commenting on it.
All right, okay.
I just, I made a comment...
Withdraw my motion there, Gasly.
I made the comment at the, after the work session, this is one of, been one of the best budgets that I've seen this, that I've seen a council put together. And I want to clarify that. The, the, it continues to address the deficit issue that we've had for years and years and years. And it's following the, what the council has set out as a directive, a policy in attacking deficits and increasing our reserves. It's, and it was, it's been a number one focus of the, of the management team. And I have a great appreciation for that. It keeps the, the tax levy the same, but we're going to see an increase in roadwork, and specifically, seal coat. The, and that, that makes me excited. The seal-coated streets are one of the, or isn't, is an effective way of, of doing street repair in a, in a relatively inexpensive way. It's a way of getting a lot of street work done in one, in one year. And I, I've always been a supporter of that program because we can do a mile's worth of seal coat for maintenance for, for what it would cost us to do about two blocks of reconstruction of a concrete or asphalt street. It also, this budget's also creating a sewer maintenance program. It's going, the, the ability of the Public Works Department to purchase a new machine that has a jet as well as a vacuum. It's, and it's something that's, that I think is extremely necessary because we're changing the way that our sewers function. Through the mandate of the, of the federal government, the EPA, we're having to separate our sewers. That means that the water that God puts down on the ground can no longer get mixed with the water that you and I put into the system that we use when we take showers or use the toilets or brush our teeth. Those can't be any, intermingled any longer. And the way our sewer system was designed, that it was designed as a combined system, and every once in a while, Mother Nature would clean those sewers out for us. They don't, it doesn't, it's not happening anymore since the sewer separation. So this, the sewer maintenance program is, I think, an excellent way of showing that the city is, is thinking and being preventive and proactive. This, this budget's keeping public safety strong. For several years, we were reducing the number of police officers, police officers and firefighters. This allows them to get back up to strength for the most part, at least for the next two or three years. We've got some, some grant dollars that we're using to fund some of those positions. And hopefully, if they're successful, they're going to find some more of those dollars, and we're going to be able to keep the department strong. And we're, we are actually reducing the percentage of dollars to our legal debt limit, which has been a goal of the, of the council before I come back on. And, and, and we were, we were complimented by our, our financial advisors that the program that we've put together, that... that if the rest of the governments would do the same, this country would be in a lot better financial position. So, I mean, we're not perfect. Leon's pointed out a lot of problems that, that we, that we have with the, with the budget, but that's not necessarily our fault. That's the way government has been doing business lately, the last twenty or thirty years. But I, I'm, I'm, I think we've put, the staff has put together a great budget. And it's, and it's doing everything that this council has directed it to do. But saying that, I think we've could have done better at looking at potential cuts, or could have challenged the staff to make those cuts. I can't tell you where they're at. I'm just saying, I think we could have, we could have done better. And the other thing that worries me is we're going into this, we're gonna approve, most likely approve this budget tonight, and we don't know where we're at with our, with our unions and our contracts. And what, it concerns me greatly that we may be in four, or five, or six months, looking at how are we going to maintain our police, and our fire, and our public's works, and our library, when we've not been able to negotiate a settlement or an agreement that falls within our, our budget that we're setting tonight?
I sure hope you're wrong about that.
I think it's a genuine...
It may mean, it may mean, counsel, that we have to come up with a different way of doing business if we can't meet that, our goals within, within our negotiating.
I think that's a genuine concern.
It's an absolute genuine concern. It's, it's one that needs to be in the forefront, and needs to be talked about by the public, and needs to be a concern. We've got to continue to operate the city, and we've, we've got a huge variable right now that we don't know how, how, how it's gonna end up, how we're going to end up in the, in the end, the next few months. Enough said from me.
Are you guys good to go?
I'm good.
I am.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody, and thank you, Mr. Shanahan, again. You don't change your, you remain the same. Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move to approve the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget.
Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
All right, next, we have a motion for preliminary adoption of second reading of ordinance vacating and selling a portion of the alley right-of-way located south of 1325 Iowa Street.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. Eric?
No changes from the previous reading on this. This is just the portion of alley directly behind 1325 Iowa Street. No other property owners were interested at this time, but something we're gonna continue to follow up with them on. This would allow expanded first garage and parking area on a dead-end alley that is unapproved, so...
Questions, counsel? Anyone from the audience have questions or comments?
We have a motion...
Okay. I have it right here, if you're okay with it, counsel?
Yep.
I move to amend the motion for preliminary adoption of second reading of ordinance vacating and selling a portion of the alley right-of-way located at south, located south of 1325 Iowa Street, Burlington, Iowa, to read as follows. For waiver, preliminary consideration, adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of ordinance, vacating and selling a portion of the alley right-of-way located south of 1325 Iowa Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to amend.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
The motion is amended, and now the original motion.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries as amended. Now, we have a motion for preliminary adoption of a second reading when ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South 14th Street right-of-way located adjacent to 1800, 1802, and 1804, South 15th Street, and adjacent to 1408 Harrison Avenue, Burlington, Iowa. And I think there's some changes that need to be made here, but I need a second.
Second.
Okay, Eric?
This was discussed at the previous council meeting. Had a resident who's purchasing 1408 Harrison Avenue on contract had some concerns about the, vacating the right-of-way and following up with them. They did not desire to move forward with that at this time. It did, was discussed by the planning commission, and they did recommend moving forward with the vacating by omitting the portion adjacent to 1408 Harrison. So, I guess a couple items on it. One, that was requested, information on the sewer in this area. I know it's, can be difficult to see, but the sewer does run within this right-of-way. You can see a manhole on Harrison, and a manhole up here at the entrance, and runs pretty close to the existing drive there. Not exact location, but it's very close to where it actually is. That serves the properties on South 15th Street and on South 14th Street. The owners were aware of the requirement for an easement over the entire property, unable to construct on the property, as we discussed previously, desire to go forward with this. So the one primary change would be omitting the portion adjacent to 1408 Harrison, and that would be reflected in the conditions of approval by removing the owner of 1408 Harrison, reducing the sale price, reflective of one fewer property being vacated. And then the easement language changing, because the platysurverate was in the previous ordinance and the legal description changed based on the removal of the property adjacent to 1408 Harrison. So with that, if there's any questions, essentially, this is just eliminating the portion of right-of-way being vacated adjacent to 1408 Harrison.
I have a question or two, but maybe I should have anyone from the audience have a comment or question? Counsel, you have...
I do, I, I've had a problem with this from the beginning. And Eric showed you the picture of the sewer running down that alley, and explained that there are people on 14th and 15th Street that access that alley. Their private lateral lines do. Right now, it's all public property, and all they have to do is get a permit from the city to estimate and repair their sewer if necessary. Now, they're, if we approve this, they're also going to have to get permission of the property owners to be able to repair their sewer. And I, I don't know what the legal ramifications are, but that's, that's a, that's a concern. Also, the, the alley will no longer be maintained by the city. It will be, it'll be private, it'll be up to them, except for that, that first section that runs by 1408 Harrison Street there. That'll, that'll still be public alley, and it'll be, have to be maintained by the city. The, the other thing is, if they put a driveway from South 14th Street to the garages, and that'll be, that'll be permitted, right?
Okay, that was my, one of my questions.
If they do that, they can park on that driveway, because that's their driveway.
Right.
And they'll walk that, what's currently the alleyway. And if the, if the, if the person at 1802 doesn't put a drive in to his garage, but the one at 1800 and 1804 does, and, and he's relying on that current private drive, or the alley, to get to that garage, he's gonna have to drive over the grass to get to it, because he's gonna be blocked in. Essentially, the South 14th Street becomes their, their alley. They just, they can't build anything permanent longer. I can imagine that the first time that that happens, that the police department's gonna get a call and say, "Someone's blocking the alley, which is not an alley." Particularly if, if, when those houses sell, and they're not aware of that
One clarification on that, there would be an access easement over the alley. And I'm sorry, maybe didn't state that correctly. They wouldn't be able to block that. It does need free-flow access through that alley. They could park in front of it between 14th Street and the alley, but they would have to maintain that, the way this ordinance reads with an access easement.
Won't happen. Go down on Hillary, go down on Hillary, go down on Parkway, go down on, on Sue, go down on Navajo, and look in those backyards. And where there's not supposed to be fences, where there's not supposed to be trees, where there's not supposed to be RVs, and see, look a straight line down there, and see if you can see. You can't. The, the, anytime that Public Works tries to get into those sewers to maintain those sewers, they gotta go across private property to get into them, because they're blocked from both ends. They've gotta go in, it's, I, we're, we're creating an issue here that doesn't need to be created, and it's, and it's not an advantage to the property owners, though they, though they think they're gaining from it. It's, I think it's gonna cause more harm to that neighborhood than it's gonna do good. And I know there's problems with sewers there, I've got firsthand knowledge of it.
Here, anything else? I might ask him a couple of questions. Eric, who, who mows that grass in that strip now?
The property owners are responsible for it.
And if they decide they want to make a driveway from 14th to the garage, does it have to be hard-surfaced?
Yeah.
So that, one person that does have a current driveway, which is gravel, then he's gonna have to...
Which, which property?
It would be...
1712.
1800, is that his, or is it 1712?
18.
See, there's a driveway off of 14th that goes up toward 1712?
That big building where it says 1712, there's a, there's a big garage there.
Yeah.
There's another one that faces the south, and then there's one at 1800 that faces the north.
Right.
And 1802 faces the west, east.
East, yeah, there's a...
1804 faces the south.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, if they were to construct a new driveway, it would be required to be hard-surfaced.
But this guy would be okay, because it's not a new driveway?
It's existing, it can remain as is. And again, this was brought forward by the property owners. This wasn't something staff brought forward.
Right.
They should do...
Because it's an easement, then that allows sewer lateral work to be there without the property owner's approval, would it?
Well, it's, yeah, it's a utility easement. They, they have the right to go in there and do the work. They probably have to repair the ground to the standard it was before.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, anyway, are we ready to move on here? I have this amendment, I need to read this amendment into the record. I move to amend the proposed ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South 14th Street right-of-way located adjacent to 1800, 1802, 1804, South 15th Street, and adjacent to 1408 Harrison, Burlington, Iowa, as follows. To amend the title of the ordinance by removing and adjacent to 1408 Harrison Avenue. Section 1, that the public right-of-way illustrated in Exhibit A and legally described in Exhibit B, shown attached here and made a part thereof, be hereby vacated. Exhibit A now becomes removed from map portion of the right-of-way request to be vacated adjacent to 1408 Harrison. Exhibit B, remove the legal description for the right-of-way adjacent to 1408 Harrison. Exhibit C, number one, remove walled aid 1408 Harrison Avenue. Number two, replace with a sale notice. The vacated alley right-of-way shall be $375. Number three, replace with an easement shall be maintained over the entire portion of the right-of-way being vacated for utility maintenance, and an access easement shall be maintained fifteen in width, fifteen feet in width along the west side, and twenty feet in width along the north side of the vacated right-of-way. And that's the amendment, so I need a second to that.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and a second to amend.
Mayor?
Yep.
I have a real concern with the amendment. There's a, this, I think, completely changes the original ordinance. It's not a minor change. It's a, nearly a total change to the ordinance. It's much different than, than what the original ordinance was. I think that if, if the council wants to pursue this, that they should vote down the original ordinance and approach it rewritten in the, in the appropriate fashion, and readdress the ordinance in that way.
How does, how do you feel about that, Eric?
I don't know that Eric or I are qualified to say whether that's a minor or a major change when you change from four properties to three properties. That's a legal interpretation that is beyond our scope.
You know, I tend to agree with you, Mr. Scott, but I also like the idea of letting these people do what they want to do, so... I'm kind of in a quandary there. Any other thoughts? Any other thoughts? Okay, let's vote, vote on the amendment.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, now, we have an amended motion to adopt the second reading of an ordinance vacating and selling. And if we approve this tonight, that means we still have a third reading to go for.
And it's, would give time for us to even clarify with Patrick, too.
Yeah, okay. That helps me.
Yeah.
Ready? Davidson?
Aye, with those restrictions.
Fleming?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Wilson?
Aye.
All right, that's the second reading, we still have a third reading to go.
I would ask that you ask the city attorney if that, his interpretation, whether that's, we've gone too far with the...
Yeah, I think you said that's what you'd do.
We were gonna ask whether...
Yeah, you said you would do that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Okay.
I turned it in earlier this week, it's harder hearing than it was last week.
No, come on, no, it's only one day.
Can I go?
Yes.
You have a resolution approving the application for a staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grants, better known as a SAFER grant.
We have a motion, a second, and I see our, our fire chief coming to tell us all about it.
Yeah, so last week, I told you why I brought the resolution. So I didn't really talk about what it was, or what I was gonna be asking for, but basically, the same thing as this SAFER grant that we have now. It'll be for three positions, one per shift. Currently, we have a shift of, we have two of 14 and one of 13. We'll be at all shifts of 13 come the end of June of this year. So, this grant wouldn't be awarded till sometime after that. So, it would add one, one person to each shift. The SAFER grant pays for their salaries, their benefits. They've been really good about reimbursing us on that side. The only cost to us would be any training that we have to pay for, and then, their gear, personal protective equipment, we purchase that. But, and that's, again, it'll be for two years. And then, at the end of that two-year period, it's just like this grant, there's no obligation on the city's part to keep those positions.
Okay.
Chief, sure with the public, your, your approach to the, to the grant writing this time? I think it's pretty impressive.
Yeah, so originally, I'd asked Jim if we could go ahead and pay for a grant writer, which we had done this first time around, we had had a grant writer. However, this, the same grant writer had never written a grant for a second time with the SAFER grant. And so I went out there and tried to find somebody, other department, that had a grant writer that had been awarded a second SAFER. So when I, I called this department, and I talked to somebody on their department, the chief, and he said, "Well, this is who we use," and he gave me a contact. So I contacted this lady, who is a county grant writer. She writes grants for a living. And I asked her, I said, "Hey, we're willing to pay a grant writer." She said, "You don't need to pay a grant writer." And I'm not, that's not my main business, writing them for fire departments. I did it as a favor to my husband, who is on this fire department. That being said, she told me, "Okay, this is what you need to do. These are the kinds of things you need to put in your grant." She said, "You're very capable of writing your own grant, especially if you've already had a SAFER grant, a lot of the stuff is the same. As soon as you're done writing it, send it to me, I'll proofread it. If we need to make adjustments, I'll do that." And she said she would do that at no cost, so... And we've been writing several grants since I've been the chief. The first time around, I wasn't quite comfortable, but after seeing how they're written, taking a couple of classes, myself and the deputy chief have written several now, been successful on a couple, so, feeling a little better about it. They are a lot of work, but I think if we do the grants, I just feel like the information in there is, I know it's true and accurate, because we put it in there, and I just feel like when you read it, you can see that I didn't pay a grant writer. Sometimes when you read a grant, it's obvious that this didn't come from the, the fire chief. So I don't know if that makes a difference to the grant readers... So I don't know if that makes a difference to the grant readers, the people that, uh, decide on the grants, but...
It's, it's outstanding.
It's outstanding, you're right.
You'd like to think it, it would, does make a difference. I mean, I would, you know?
Mm-hmm.
I would take that in more consideration than somebody who's paid, you know, somebody who's not involved with the community or the department.
Right. And, and truthfully, it ended up being a lot of work for us, because they don't know anything about your departments that are constantly sending emails, like, you gotta get all the data set up for them. By the time we were done, we're like, "Why did this?" It's like, we'd have, we did the grant anyway, we had so much time into it, so...
Thank you for all the hard work.
You're welcome. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any comments from the audience? Counsel, anything else on this?
No.
Nothing.
Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You have a resolution accepting the non-union employee classification and compensation study.
Second.
We have a motion in second, and I think Stephanie's coming with this one.
Sure, this is the final report, um, that Gov HR USA has provided to us to approve. Um, again, since she made, Joellen made her presentation, there are just a few, um, changes to it. A couple of positions got, um, put into different, um, ranges, but other than that, it's, it's the same as what she presented a few weeks ago. Does anybody have any questions?
And, and it would be our intention to use this for the non-union employee manual?
Right. I would, um, propose we use the table three, which is the proposed pay ranges and the new grades in our new, um, in the next non-union personal manual.
And so the goal is to bring that forward in April?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's one we, okay, all right. All we're doing now is really just accepting the report, I like to leave it that way. Okay? Any questions or comments from the audience? Counsel, do you have any questions for...
No.
Mrs. Stoker? Okay, Kathleen?
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now is the time for comments from the audience. Anyone have a comment on something we've not previously discussed? No. Counsel and Wilson, do you have any comments?
Um, yeah. I'd like to say, you know, that we've had a, I think, a rough week or so. Um, and I'd like to put it out there to the public that, you know, if you see something, say something. Um, the police can only do so much with what little information they're given. A lot of times, I think, the public may have more, um, and there are avenues that, um, the public can share that information with the police that, you know, are anonymous, um, Crime Stoppers. I believe there's a link on Facebook, on the Burlington Peds Facebook, where you can also anonymously submit information. I think that's really important to keep in mind. Um, yep, that's all I have, thank you.
Excellent point. I think at some point, the community's gotta get fed up with what's going on. I agree. Mr. Scott?
Well, just thank you for saying that. That's, I'm glad you did, and it's, uh, point well taken. That's, I had a comment on that, but you said it better than I could.
Okay, is that it? Um, Councilman Fleming and I and city manager were at, uh, is that, what day was that?
Thursday.
Thursday morning with Governor Branstad and, and his, uh, campaign. Uh, he'll, he'll tell you right up front, he's, he's campaigning for this, uh, the water quality program. Uh, it was very educational, had some good presentations. I want to commend our staff, they did a great job on, on, uh...
That's what I was gonna say.
Yes. And the day before that, we were also at the chamber. Mayor McCambo did a wonderful job with the, uh, what was the name of it? Site selection, um, the award that Burlington's won for that. I think we'd be, be commended for that. I also want to congratulate the Notre Dame Nike girls for qualifying for the state tournament and winning their first game. We need, um, Rob wants somebody for KBR on Wednesday morning. Are we still on or you got something else going?
Um, let me get back to you on that, because Steve is thinking about changing the time to nine o'clock. Um, I'll send you guys an email through your...
But you, do you need somebody this week then, or just a time change?
Yes, but they would have to be able to come in, maybe a little early, but we're still not entirely...
I, I, I told you I do it during the winter, so this is the last winter month, so I'll, I'll do it.
Right, we'll have you.
Somebody wants to come with me.
I'm available.
Is that okay with you?
Sounds good.
Okay.
And it's gonna be earlier, you say?
Um, not sure on that yet.
You're gonna let us know?
Yeah, we'll let you know, all you gotta do is vote.
Thank you. And, uh, the place and fire chief handed me this brochure. Uh, they're having a career expo on Saturday, April second, from eleven to one at the Maple Leaf Center, um, looking for potential recruits. And they're gonna give you some idea of what it's like to be a fireman and, and/or a policeman, what, uh, about the explorer program, or how to become a, a reserve officer. And there's a headline that says, "We're encouraging female and minority applicants and so to attend." There is a, a thing on the front page of the website also, you can take a look at that. Uh, anything else need to be said about that, gentlemen?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Fleming?
I have nothing more.
Mr. Furnough?
Uh, just gonna point out with the, Charlie did a, did do an excellent job putting that together. He had to get a lot of information. Um, and not only Charlie, Mr. Fitting did a, a great job, and after going to the two, um, both there and over to West Burlington, I was really, really impressed with, with Don's presentation and his ability to put forward, uh, clear information on how the, the sewer plant works...
Oh, great.
...in a way that's entertaining, uh, and keeps people going for over half an hour. It's hard to imagine you can listen that long to that topic, but he, he does make it, make it manageable. But the costs that, that Charlie outlined there for water and sewer needs, um, it points